Okay, the November 16th, 2020 regular meeting of the Fairfax County School Board will now come to order. I will now take role. Ms. Cohen?
Here.
Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Good evening.
Ms. Darnak Kofax?
Good evening, I'm here.
Mr. Frisch?
Hello.
Ms. Keys-Gamara?
Good evening.
Ms. Maron?
Good evening.
Ms. Omesh? Hello. Ms. Pakarski?
Hi, everyone.
Ms. Seismohizer?
Good evening.
Ms. Tolan?
Good evening, everyone.
And I see Ms. McLachlan is right behind us. And Mr. Anabudo, are you with us? We do not have Mr. Anabudo with us. So I now invite all of us to rise as Ms. Seismohizer leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
My eyes fell on you first. Let's just please have a moment of silence. Thank you. I'm so sorry, I am struggling a lot with the fog on my glasses this evening, so I apologize for any delay that that may cause. In order to comply with Section 2.2-3712 of D of the Code of Virginia, it is necessary for the Board to certify that since the Fairfax County School Board convened a closed meeting on November 16th, 2020, and to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters that were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board during the closed meeting. Do we have a motion? Thank you, Ms. Omesh. Seconded? Thank you, Mr. Frisch. All in favor? We have Ms. Omesh, Ms. Seismohizer, Ms. Cohen, Mr. Frisch, Ms. McLachlan, Ms. Corbett Sanders, Ms. Pakarski, Ms. Keys-Gamara, Ms. Tolan, Ms. Darnak Kofax, and with Ms. Maron away from the table, and myself. So that will be 11. Thank you. Copies of tonight's agenda are available at the back of the auditorium. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast on Channel 99 and livestreamed on the website at fcpss.edu/tv/CH99. Item 3.03 Strategic Plan Goal Presentation has been removed from tonight's agenda. This is a portion of the meeting where the Board will confirm any action regarding issues that were discussed in the closed meeting. These issues may include action taken regarding student disciplinary matters. Board members have discussed each individual case, and at this time will make several motions to confirm the recommended action. And I call on Ms. Maron for a motion.
Yes, one moment, please. I'll get my screen on. Thank you. Good evening. Dr., I move that the Chairman of the School Board be authorized to execute... Excuse me, Ms. Dr. Anderson, am I reading the first motion or the second, I believe?
You're reading M1.
Oh, okay. I move that the Chairman of the School Board be authorized to execute, on behalf of the Board, the contract for the Chief Academic Officer...
Equity. I think they may be different from the script to the other document.
They are. Great, well, let me restart then with M1. Thank you. I move that the Chairman of the School Board be authorized to execute, on behalf of the Board, the contract for the Chief Equity Officer, as discussed in closed meeting.
Second? Thank you, Ms. Seismohizer. Who would like to speak to this motion? Dr. Braybrand?
Great, it is my honor and privilege to introduce to you for this motion, Dr. Lisa Williams, who currently serves as Executive Director of the Department of Equity and Cultural Proficiency for Baltimore County, Maryland Public Schools, as FCPS's new Chief Equity Officer. We are excited to welcome Dr. Williams to lead Fairfax County Public Schools and to continue the cross-departmental efforts to ensure that innovative and equitable practices are in effect across the division. As Chief Equity Officer, Dr. Williams will also oversee the Embudsman Office, the Office of Professional Learning and Family Engagement, the Hearings Office, and Thomas Jefferson High School for Science and Technology Admissions. Since 2009, Dr. Williams has led Baltimore County Public Schools in their efforts to implement educational equity policies and training and professional development on anti-racist teaching, learning, and other issues related to social justice in schools. Prior to that, Dr. Williams served as Director of the Office of Title I for Baltimore County Public Schools. She's served as a consultant for the National Alliance for Partnerships and Equity, and has been an adjunct constructor at Notre Dame University of Maryland, McDaniel College, and York College. Dr. Williams earned her Doctorate in Education in Urban Educational Leadership, as well as her Bachelor's Degree in Biology from Morgan State University, a Master's Degree in Counseling Psychology, as well as another Bachelor's Degree in Psychology from Townsend University. Please join me, right? Well, let me let the Board do its following motion. I'm excited to introduce Dr. Williams to this Board this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand. Any other speakers to the motion?
Dr. Anderson, usually the maker and the second will speak first.
Ms. Maron, would you like to speak to your motion?
I sure would. I am so thrilled to welcome Dr. Williams to our School Division Leadership Team. I am just so amazed by her experience, not only her credentials, but the knowledge that she brings, the work that she brings, working in an inner-city environment, and I think that that is really going to help the work that we are trying so hard to do here in Fairfax, to move towards anti-racism, to move towards equity, as we start the process of creating an anti-racism policy, the work that we're doing in all ways to be more inclusive, not just by ethnicity, but by ability. I'm thrilled to work with you, and welcome to Fairfax.
Thank you. Ms. Seismohizer, would you like to speak to your second?
Thank you. Yes, just briefly, I echo Ms. Maron's comments, and I also am thrilled to welcome Dr. Williams to Fairfax County. The description of your work and your background that you've done was just wowed me, and I'm really excited to see the great work that you will do in bringing equity for all of our students, and looking at all of our students from a strengths-focused lens, and from creating an inclusive and welcoming atmosphere for all of our students. So I just want to say, I am thrilled to welcome you, I am thrilled by the work you will do, and I'm looking forward to partnering with you on this really important work, because if our students don't feel welcome, the rest doesn't matter. You have to feel welcomed to be ready to learn. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers to this motion? We have Ms. McLachlan, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm also excited to welcome Dr. Williams. As a longtime Board Member, one of the things that our Minority Student Achievement Oversight Committee really lobbied for this Board, and several of us picked up that mantle and lobbied as well, was that we needed a Chief Equity Officer here in Fairfax County. And so, we've only had one so far to date, Dr. Duran, over in Arlington Superintendent now. So it's really, really wonderful to see your wealth of experience and expertise in this field, coming now to Fairfax County. I hope you will feel warmly welcomed, and we look forward to you helping all of us do better, more effective work in equity. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Yes, good evening, Dr. Williams, and I am so pleased that you are joining us as part of the leadership team for Fairfax County Public Schools. You've come to us with a wealth of experience, not only as an esteemed leader and academic leader, but you have a track record of transforming the academic and the policy environment into action. And so, I know that I share with all of my colleagues on this Board an enthusiasm for welcoming you and looking forward to working closely with you as we transform key equity initiatives into action, and just really pleased to welcome you, and also very pleased to see some of you come to us so highly recommended. Your references are impeccable, your education is great, and so I really look forward to our journey together.
Thank you. Ms. Darnak Kofax, followed by Ms. Pakarski?
Dr. Williams, I just want to say welcome. I look forward to working with you. Equity has been a priority for this Board for the entire duration that I have been on it. We welcome a new Chief Equity Officer, particularly someone with your credentials and your experience, and I look forward to getting to know you and working with you in my region, as well as the entire county. So, welcome to the Fairfax family.
Ms. Pakarski?
Thank you. I also just wanted to take the opportunity to welcome you publicly and very enthusiastically. I know you are going to be bringing a great wealth of knowledge and experience and insight, and I am excited to hear that, excited for this system, and very excited to work with you. So, welcome to FCPS.
Ms. Omesh?
Thank you. Happy to follow, of course, in the sentiment of my colleagues, thrilled. I want to highlight a couple of things that make me particularly excited. First, that you're not only an academic in the field, but also a practitioner, and having both of those lenses is extremely important as we make data-based, informed decisions about the problems on the ground, and seeing the inconsistencies there, and how we can make the situation better for every student. I also, you know, am proud to see that, I know through Dr. Braybrand's leadership before, that this was decoupled, and that we're going to focus specifically on equity in this role, and I'm thrilled that you are the person to do that. You know, what we had heard in terms of the sentiments from the community, from staff, it seems that everyone is excited to embrace you, and I am too, and I know my colleagues obviously are as well, from what they've been saying. So, I look forward to working with you, in particular about thinking of the intersectional ways that we can really highlight the various, you know, talents that are out there in our county and our community, and to make sure we're serving every child, because we all understand, justice delayed is justice denied, and I know you share the sentiment and look forward to working together to improve FCPS.
Thank you. Mr. Frisch?
Thank you. You can't tell because of our masks, but we're all smiling from ear to ear right now, and, you know, we could have those masks that have the smile, but that's a little creepy. I do want to say that we are, I am excited to have you join this team, and I know that the work is going to be intense, and that we have a lot that we could learn from you, and that I'm looking forward to being a thought partner and putting my shoulder under the work, because I know it's going to be hard work, and I can't think of anybody that we'd rather be doing it with, so thank you for being here.
Thank you. Ms. Cohen?
Hello, thank you so much for coming and being here. We're really excited about having you. You know, I think we all have seen, in our time with FCPS, all of the inequities that exist, and now it's time to do something about it. And so, we know your charge is great, but everything we hear about you, you are more than up to the task, and we really look forward to helping you in that. So, welcome.
Thank you. Ms. Keys-Gamara?
Thank you so much, and welcome, Dr. Williams. I am ecstatic to know that you have such a proven track record, and that you were willing to come to Fairfax County to assist us in our ability to get this necessary work done. So, I just wanted to say thank you so much for considering and taking on the challenge of working with our school system, and I look forward to partnering with you and having great discussion, because I am sure you will enrich the conversation here at FCPS. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Tolan?
Yes, Dr. Williams, welcome to Fairfax County. I'm super excited for the opportunity to meet you and work with you. I actually, years ago, lived in Baltimore County as I was working on my Master's Degree in Science Education, so I feel like we've got some things in common already, and so I look forward to our working relationship. I'm super excited about the fact that, on top of your academic background, you really bring to us the, you know, on-the-ground how to execute an equity program, and I look forward to working with you on that. Welcome.
Thank you. And very quickly, I do want to say welcome to FCPS. We're excited about the work that you're going to do here. We are very grateful that someone of your caliber will be joining us. So with that, I will call for the vote. All in favor of the recommendation by the Superintendent for the Chief Equity Officer, please raise your hands. We have Ms. Omesh, Ms. Seismohizer, Ms. Cohen, Mr. Frisch, Ms. McLachlan, Ms. Keys-Gamara, Ms. Darnak Kofax, Ms. Corbett Sanders, Ms. Pakarski, Ms. Maron, Ms. Tolan, and myself. That is unanimous. Welcome.
Welcome!
Please join us and say a few words.
So, Dr. Williams, I have the great privilege and high honor to introduce to you Fairfax County Public Schools' new Chief Equity Officer, Dr. Lisa Williams.
Well, first, let me just say thank you so much for the honor and privilege to serve. I'm just giddy. I mean, I know that's not the professional way to present oneself, but I will just say, it has been exciting to have conversation with so many interested and invested partners in doing this work, and certainly I have been afforded a tremendous privilege in working with an organization in Baltimore County that has been so invested and so concerned about this topic before it was on anybody's radar, so that I have had these opportunities to learn these different things, and have this opportunity now to partner with an organization that really wants to push the limits around how inclusive we can be, how pluralistic we can be, how we can actually serve all students well, but it is going to take some energy, right, and some courage. And so with that, I just thank you for the opportunity, and am looking forward to the work that we'll do together. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Williams, and thank you for those wonderful words, "energy and courage." I will write those down. Thank you. And now I call on Ms. Cohen for a motion.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. I move that the Chairman of the School Board be authorized to execute, on behalf of the Board, the contract for the Chief Academic Officer, as discussed in closed meeting.
Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. McLachlan. Dr. Braybrand, would you please speak to the motion, and then we'll have the speakers?
Yes. Thank you, Chairman Anderson. It is my honor and privilege this evening to announce to you our new Chief Academic Officer, Dr. Sloan Presidio. Dr. Presidio currently serves as our Assistant Superintendent for Instructional Services. Dr. Presidio has been instrumental in helping FCPS to develop its learning plan in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. He has served in his current position since 2012, and is currently leading the development of a culturally responsive review of the Division's curriculum, as well as an equity plan to increase diversity in our advanced academic programs. As Chief Academic Officer, Dr. Presidio will oversee the Instructional Services Department, the Department of Special Services, and the Department of School Improvement and Supports. Dr. Presidio earned his Doctorate of Education from the University of Oregon, his Juris Doctor from the University of Oregon School of Law, a Master's of Education from the University of Oregon, and a Bachelor's Degree in Fine Arts from the University of California in Los Angeles. Ladies and gentlemen, I present to this Board for your review, Dr. Sloan Presidio.
Thank you very much. Ms. Cohen, would you like to speak to your motion?
I would. We are beyond excited, Sloan, to have you, Dr. Presidio, to have you officially become our Chief Academic Officer. I can say firsthand, the work that you have done in the short time that we have been here, yet in the middle of a pandemic, has been remarkable, and I don't know what we would have done as a system if you were not here, and so we're so grateful to get to try to keep you here as long as we can. So, welcome, and we're very excited to continue on the journey together.
Thank you. Ms. McLachlan?
Wonderful. Dr. Presidio, it's a pleasure to second this motion. I joined the Board only seven months prior to your arrival, and so we've gone on this journey together in service for improving FCPS, and throughout my tenure, I have so deeply appreciated not only your knowledge and expertise with more than a decade that you brought from Oregon, your fresh eyes that you brought to our great school system, but the care and compassion you have shown to this work. Without question, it is incredibly tireless work, and you have had a young family, and you've juggled all of that with always just the greatest calm and temperament that I know we so appreciate on the Board. Your responsiveness to the inquiries we have are something that also makes you a standout. But for the public, I certainly want to make sure that they understand what an awesome achievement this is for you to have been selected. This was a national search with highly qualified, incredibly talented candidates, and yet, what we knew probably from the very beginning is that we had such a gem in you, and so for you to come through that national search, I hope it's even more appreciated that your talent and wisdom and what you've done for us here in Fairfax County, you'll now be bringing to the next level, and I'm very excited to have this opportunity to be working with you, along with my colleagues, as we continue this really challenging work during the pandemic. So, many thanks to you and to your spouse, who's been so remarkably supportive of you and your career, and to your kids for the sacrifices they've had to make with the great work that you do on behalf of all of us and Fairfax County children and employees. So, welcome and congratulations.
Thank you. Ms. Seismohizer?
I also echo what my colleagues have said, and Sloan, I'm so thrilled, I have to say, UCLA was my brother's school, so a little, you know, nod to a great school from a Berkeley grad to the Baby Bear School. But, you know, honestly, I just wanted to say, you have been really instrumental in helping me understand my role, and always calm and measured in any conversation I want to have with you, and your depth of knowledge on any topic that I bring up with you has been really impressive, and really just, I don't know what our school system would have done without your hard work, especially these last few months in the pandemic, and I've really come to really respect your knowledge and your willingness to partner and listen as we bring ideas to you, that you really, not just listen to, but think through and help me figure out how to make my ideas better. And so, I really appreciate, I know you're going to do incredible work for us at FCPS, I'm so glad we get to keep you, as Laura Jane said, and I'm just very, very excited for you, and I want to thank you for being willing to continue to serve the students and families and staff of FCPS.
Thank you. Ms. Corbett Sanders, followed by Ms. Maron?
Thank you. It is my pleasure to offer a couple of comments, because I know that promoting you to this position, Dr. Presidio, is one of the smartest things that this Board will ever do, and the reason I know that is because of the wisdom, the grace, and the knowledge in which you approach your work. I've had the pleasure of working with you on everything from cultural bias and sensitivity in our curriculum, to gun safety, to advanced academics, and worked with you prior to coming on the Board, and have always been just impressed with your professionalism, your intellect, and your willing to innovate and bring fresh, new ways of doing things. And it is with that approach that Fairfax County Public Schools becomes a better school system, and with you as the Chief Academic Officer, I am confident that we will be able to survive this pandemic, come out of it stronger, and be able to continue to be a world-class education system. So, thank you very much, Dr. Presidio, for all you have done, and more importantly, for all that you will do. Congratulations.
Ms. Maron, and then Ms. Darnak Kofax?
Dr. Presidio, congratulations. This couldn't be more well-deserved, your hard work, your humility. I didn't know that you had a JD until recently, which is just more incredible of your qualifications. The system is really going to be well-served by you, and I'm so pleased that we were able to elevate your leadership and your work. So, thank you, and I look forward to continuing to work with you.
Ms. Darnak Kofax, then Ms. Pakarski?
Dr. Presidio, this is a well-deserved promotion. You know, I have been hopeful that this would happen for quite some time. You and I have had many spirited conversations through the years, but you are always professional, always humble, and always willing to listen, and always willing to give advice. So, this is a well-deserved step up for you. I was here, I was new to the Board when you came, and I have seen you grow, I have seen you excel, and this, as some of my colleagues said, this was a national search. You came out on top. Those of us who have worked with you knew that that was inevitable. I am so honored to have worked with you up to this point, look forward to doing it a much longer, Sloan. So, congratulations on this well-deserved promotion.
Ms. Pakarski, then Ms. Tolan?
Thank you. Dr. Presidio, congratulations. As my colleagues have mentioned, I also have the utmost respect for you and your work. You've been an invaluable heart of the FCPS team, especially this summer, when we have been taxed in this fall in ways that have never before we have experienced, and your temperament and your approach to your work is very well-respected, and I know will be very important as you take on this new role, and I'm excited to see how we progress with you there. And I actually didn't know about your Fine Arts Degree, and as a, you know, big music ed fan, I can't wait to hear more about that. Congratulations.
Ms. Tolan, followed by Ms. Omesh?
Congratulations, Dr. Presidio. Funny where people end up, over time, I was a Program Manager in Instructional Services when Dr. Presidio arrived with FCPS, so had the good fortune of, you know, working for Dr. Presidio for, I don't know, five, six years perhaps, and learned so much, you know, working in his organization, under his leadership, and continue to look forward to working with you on, you know, continued creative and strategic ways to improve education for all of our students. Dr. Presidio, thank you so much for your dedication to Fairfax County Public Schools, and for your willingness to stay, you know, working with Fairfax County and sticking it out on the East Coast. Congratulations. Looking forward to working with you further.
Ms. Omesh, followed by Ms. Keys-Gamara?
Dr. Presidio, as everyone has shared, I'm thrilled about this promotion, and I want to highlight a couple of things. You know, not only has it been obvious to the Board and to the public that you've stepped up during the return-to-learn and virtual learning challenges, whether that's been in our work sessions or offline, but even in our very first conversation, when things were challenging, it was not unrecognized that you had the humility and the honesty to acknowledge where our system had challenges and to problem-solve as to where we could head, and then that was something that really highlighted some of those traits in you, and the capable leader that you are in this work. the capable leader that you are in this work. And of course, you know, working with you offline, the follow-up you've had, the responsiveness, and not only that, but the willingness to be courageous, to just point out where we could be doing better, and your recognition that not all voices are represented equally in our work, and the importance of having that in mind as a leader. Because the chief academic officer position, of course, is highlighted towards student achievement, that's the important role of it, but a critical piece is that equity component, even in that work, right? So, I'm just thrilled that that's a perspective you have and that you like to push forward and you think about and are critical about when you do the work you do, and have just been very grateful for your advocacy on that front in our work together and in your follow-up, as I'm sure we'll continue working on, you know, many of these challenges ahead. But I'm confident that with your leadership, FCPS really lucked out with this one, and we're grateful to have you.
Ms. Keys-Gamara, followed by Ms. Frisch.
Dr. Presidio, I am, like my colleagues, thrilled that you have decided to take on this new role. In the midst of a pandemic where we are dealing with so many changes every single day, I am comforted by the fact that you are there and that you will be in a place where you can continue to provide your steady, calm, cool, collective presence. I think you need some of those Blues Brothers kind of sunglasses or something because you just really bring that kind of comfort, and yet, you are so open, and I'm just grateful that you will continue to be here, and I'm looking forward to working with you in your new role. And I'm sorry I can't turn my camera on, I'm having technical difficulties.
Ms. Frisch.
Dr. Presidio, congratulations. We're still smiling under the masks, by the way. The worst part about this is now we've got great big shoes to fill for the position you're leaving behind. So, you know, one benefit is another loss. I want to thank you for always being gracious with your time, especially during this pandemic, and taking the time to hear from this board and to share your views about where things are, your willingness to engage with us on matters of policy. And, you know, I have zero doubt, when you tell us this is my best thinking on something, that that's the case, but that you're also open-minded enough to be convinced otherwise, and that's the key. We've really lucked out here, and we're grateful to have you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Frisch. I won't belabor the point. I'm very excited for this appointment. Everything that my colleagues have shared, exactly true. And I also am concerned, as Mr. Frisch is, regarding who will fill those very, very large shoes. Very excited about this appointment and welcome into this position. And now, we will take the vote. All in favor of Dr. Presidio in this position for chief academic officer? We have Ms. McLaughlin, Mr. Frisch, Ms. Cohen, Ms. Ismaehizer, Ms. Omish, Ms. Keys-Gamara, Ms. Bukarski, Ms. Corbett Sanders, Ms. Maron, Ms. Tolan, Ms. Darnak Kofax, and myself. That is unanimous. Congratulations. Dr. Brabran?
Ladies and gentlemen, the new chief academic officer for Fairfax County Public Schools, Dr. Sloan Presidio.
Yay! Well done.
Well, first, let me say just how honored and humbled I am to be able to serve in the role as chief academic officer. And as Mr. Frisch said, I am smiling under this mask. I guarantee you, I've never smiled this much at a school board meeting before. And I just want to say, you know, usually, I'm not one who enjoys these kinds of activities where you're in the spotlight, but tonight, listening to your comments, they were really, really heartwarming, and I just want to tell you how much they meant to me personally, and they were so gracious, and I just want to thank you so much. So, I'm very excited about this opportunity. I want to thank Dr. Brabran, Dr. Ivy, the entire school board for entrusting me with this responsibility. I promise all of you and the community, I'll work my hardest every day to make sure that I continue to earn your trust and earn your confidence, and I'm very, very excited for this opportunity. I'm excited to be able to work with Dr. Williams, our new chief equity officer, and to partner with her and other leaders in this system, as we really try to figure out, you know, how can we be the best school system for every child in this system? We know that we're a great school system, the best in the country, I have no doubt about that, but we've got to be excellent for every student. Our responsibility, my responsibility, is to make sure that every single one of our students is prepared to be successful with their post-secondary goals, and I'm going to take that responsibility very, very seriously. And I'm excited to continue the work with the instructional services department, even though I will be stepping out. There's no way that I could stand up here and not recognize, really, the unsung heroes of this school system when it comes to all the work that they do behind the scenes to make sure that our students have those kinds of learning opportunities that we expect them to have in every single one of our classrooms. And I want to thank everybody in that department for any success. It might have appeared that I might have had a hand in, I can guarantee you, it was the direct result to folks in the instructional services department. I'm excited to continue the work together, and I look forward to continuing to partner with this board on your goals around equity. I'm so proud of the work of the board to really dismantle systemic inequities in this system, and I know if any school system can do it, this school system can do it. And I do know that our educators and our classrooms here can do anything if we just listen to them and support them and collaborate with them. So, I very much look forward to supporting our students and our families and our educators in any way possible. So, thank you again for this opportunity. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Presidio. Congratulations again. Very, very well-deserved. Very excited about these two that you brought to us, Dr. Brabran, this evening. At this time, I would like to call on Ms. Frisch for a recognition.
Thank you. School Psychology Awareness Week Recognition. School psychologists are uniquely qualified members of school teams serving students, staff, and families. School psychologists receive specialized advanced graduate preparation that includes coursework and practical experiences relevant to both psychology and education. They apply expertise in mental health, learning, and behavior to change lives by taking action to help children and youth succeed academically, socially, behaviorally, and emotionally. In alignment with the FCPS Strategic Plan and Portrait of a Graduate, school psychologists help individuals realize their own abilities, develop the skills they need to cope with the normal stresses of life, to work productively and fruitfully, and be valuable contributors to the community. In their work with students, school psychologists help students develop the social, emotional, and life skills necessary to realize personal achievement and growth, and to build resilience and a sense of belonging. Through delivery of direct services using evidence-based practices, school psychologists help students build social and emotional competence and skills required to actively engage in learning. School psychologists collaborate with school teams in the development of universal prevention and intervention practices across a tiered system of supports. These practices foster resilience, increase educator understanding of social and emotional development, reduce barriers to learning, and increase student protective factors. School psychologists bring knowledge of data collection and analysis to team discussions, which informs intervention development and monitoring of student progress. They intervene when students experience mental health issues, which may require effective behavioral management and individualized plans. They are members of crisis response teams, threat assessment teams, assess students at risk of harming themselves, and teach and implement trauma-informed practices. School psychologists consult with staff and parents to further their understanding of complex student issues, student needs, and to help them develop the necessary skills to appropriately respond to student needs. All children and youth can face problems from time to time, related to learning, social relationships, making difficult decisions, or managing emotions such as feeling depressed, anxious, worried, or isolated. School psychologists help students, families, educators, and members of the community understand and resolve both long-term, chronic problems, and short-term issues that students may face. They are highly skilled and a ready resource in an effort to ensure that all FCPS children and youth thrive in school, at home, and in life. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Frisch. The next order of business is citizen participation. Speakers are requested to limit their remarks to not more than three minutes. The school board will not hear statements involving issues that have been scheduled for public hearings, such as capital improvement program, budget, and boundaries. Speakers should only address new business, action items, or resolutions as listed on the meeting agenda. Complaints regarding individual students or school-based employees should be directed to the appropriate school principal or other school official. Speakers should refrain from using personally identifiable information in connection with an individual student, and are expected to deliver their comments with a decorum and respect appropriate to the business of the board. I'm sorry, appropriate to the conduct of the public's business. In-person speakers should stand behind the black line on the floor and speak into the microphone. Thank you for your cooperation, and thanks to those who have come to speak to us today. Tonight, we have 10 citizens who've signed up to address the board, and we also have two video testimonies. And I'll call on our clerk to call our speakers.
Our first speaker is Kimberly Adams.
Good evening, Dr. Anderson, members of the school board, Dr. Brabran, and leadership team. My name is Kimberly Adams, and I am speaking as the president of the Fairfax Education Association. The governor's most recent measures to protect the Commonwealth specifically exempted schools. As our community unites to push back against the current rapid increase in COVID-19 infections, we need Governor Northam to provide leadership for our schools, in addition to the guidance he has provided for businesses and other public spaces. This weekend, our school employee unions across the Northern Virginia region began a letter-writing campaign to the governor and our legislators, because we know that this board needs their support as the rise in cases pushes our district away from in-person instruction and back to a virtual setting. In just 24 hours, over 500 individuals sent those letters. Today, our presidents of those larger districts in our region, Fairfax, Prince William, Loudon, and Arlington, representing more than 12,000 school employees, urged the governor to return the entire Commonwealth back to Phase Two of the reopening strategy. We asked that he include a recommendation that public schools return to virtual learning as the safest option until case rates return to a downward trend and remain below 5% PCR, as indicated by the CDC. Our metrics in Fairfax are climbing. Unfortunately, yesterday, Fairfax was at 191 cases per 100,000 residents. Today, we are at 211 cases per 100,000. That means that a daily rolling average of over 2,000 people have COVID-19 over a 14-day period, and the numbers are even higher in Prince William and Loudon. In Fairfax, everyone, including educators, wants our schools to be back to normal, but we are far from that right now. We are thankful that this data shows that we must delay adding more in-person classrooms for now, and in fact, if the data trend continues in the wrong direction, as we believe it may, we will have to bring more students back out of our classrooms to a virtual setting. In addition, we need to ensure that the metrics for Groups 1 and 2 and 7 and 8 are clear and appropriate, and currently, we are not sure that that is the case. We have seen that our local school leaders and even school employees are under attack by those who are focused on short-term solutions with long-term repercussions. As a system, we must rebuild trust, follow through on consistently promised mitigation strategies and metrics to protect staff and students in our buildings. We must continue to show that we are a larger, caring community that wants to keep everyone safe. And finally, we must ensure that our community will find a way to stop the spread of COVID-19. The FEA believes that this is possible, but we need your help, and we must all work together. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is George Becerra.
Good evening, school board members, Chairman Anderson and Superintendent Brabran. My name is George Becerra, and I'm speaking tonight as a co-chair of the Minority Student Achievement Oversight Committee. I'm not here tonight to talk about TJ, but MSAOC will present the position letter later this evening or first thing tomorrow morning. I would first like to thank and send my best wishes to Mr. John Torrey, SIPS Executive Director for Communications and Community Relations, on his retirement next week. I appreciate the time you took to answer my questions over the many years. I will miss our chats and your honesty. At the same token, I'd like to thank, I'd like to welcome and congratulate Dr. Lisa Williams and Dr. Presidio on their new positions as chief equity officer and chief academic officer. As you know, as you may know or may not know, you both will be an intricate part of MSAOC's monthly meetings and charge to the school board. Our next meeting is December 9th. I'd like to thank former chairman Karen Corbett Sanders and choosing MSAOC to be part of both these committee selection panels. Mr. Bob Shaw for the chief academics and myself for the chief equity. While I am thanking people, I would like to also thank county executive Brian Hill in tuning in late tonight to hear my next comments. As MSAOC has been on the skip since its inception in 2012, and been part of the creation of the ONE Fairfax Policy adopted by both the Board of Supervisors and School Board, we hope the joint collaboration between the superintendent and county executive ramps up to the next level during your weekly meetings that Dr. Brabran has said that you all have. With the new hire of Dr. Williams and the county executive strategic plan for the county being presented next year and voted on by the Board of Supervisors, the operational piece in implementing fully the ONE Fairfax Policy will be set for both the schools and county services. To Ms. McLaughlin and Ms. Bukarski, I welcome you to the skip, or, let's say, Ms. Bukarski and the supervisors, Lusk and Palchek. There's a lot of work to be done in this coming year with the skip starting in January. To Dr. Brabran and the budget chair, Mrs. Maron, we invite you, extended invitation to our January 13th meeting to present the superintendent's proposed budget, which will be presented on January 7th. At the same time, I'd like to thank county executive Hill and chief financial officer Joe Mondaro for accepting the invitation to meet with us concerning the budget that you will present in February. Thank you very much. Hope you have a good year.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Akshay Devakonda.
Hi, good evening. My name is Akshay, and I'm a 2011 TJ graduate. First, thank you to the school board for having the courage to get rid of the TJ test. You are the first to do it for a selective high school in America, and school systems and advocates nationwide are watching our next steps. More rigorous metrics are needed to monitor admissions reform. The Blue Road Commission established FCPS for TJ in 2004, had some ideas, keeping track of why some accepted students do not enroll, determining what are the main influences on students' decisions to apply, surveying what current TJ students think about the environment, monitoring the long-term effects of diversity in student learning, keeping track of differences in postgraduate experiences between TJ cohorts that were more or less diverse, and so on. These are just some of the 23 recommendations that they had, one of which was actually suggesting use of a lottery in admissions. But even if you do end up going with holistic reviews, please consider how to use admissions to redefine merit. We currently look at it on an individual level where students compete to get into TJ. As an alumnus, I can tell you this sets the tone for how we learn at TJ beyond. The fear of losing out in grades and activities pushes learning itself aside. It's also an FCPS issue, but TJ, as a government school, has a mandate to be a laboratory of education to develop a different culture. We have to use admissions to think about how we can build a community of learners and shift towards collective merit. Put it this way, I'm not just a 2011 graduate, I'm part of the TJ class of 2011. A TJ education should be a positive-sum game where each student brings different ideas, perspectives, and voices to the table. Diversity is crucial for this, which is why you can't solve the issue without solving admissions. The Virginia requirements for government schools say that students there should be risk-takers and decision-makers in a non-threatening environment. Instituting a merit lottery would remove pressure for students to develop a positive and realistic concept of self and others, another government school requirement. The merit lottery and holistic review both have an element of chance, and the only difference is that the lottery is honest about it. Dr. Natasha Waurik, who are college admissions expert who was taught at Harvard and TUS, and Dr. Barry Schwartz, a Swarthmore professor of psychology, both say that when we reduce a student to an application in GPA, it's impossible to determine exactly who is more high-achieving all the time. Dr. Waurik says that up to 25% of admissions decisions at Harvard cannot be explained after accounting for everything else, and Harvard has been doing this for 364 years. This luck disguises meritocracy in the admissions process, hurts both student body aptitude and diversity. Research that TJ alumni actually represent has shown that schools of merit lotteries are more representative than schools of other processes, and they can still top US News' World Report rankings. Furthermore, the Department of Education has encouraged use of merit lotteries, and they're even proposed by Harvard Law Professor Lani Guine. Finally, please consider the 100 sit-aside seats for a second look after the lottery picks students first. It's a small change that community kids, that no one is more entitled to a spot than anyone else, but can still have a follow-up review to make sure anyone who needs TJ will get a second look. It falls in line with Dr. Brabran's guidelines for a caring culture. Thank you all, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jewel Coulter.
Hi, my name is Jewel Coulter, and I'm with NACSEC Virginia. I'm a junior at Anadale High School, and I've been going to school in Fairfax County for 12-ish years now, and I've been experiencing being a student in Fairfax County as an Asian white African-American girl in one of the most diverse areas in the county. You can infer with my background that diversity and inclusion is very important to me, as I've been around people with different backgrounds, identities, and religious beliefs my whole life, which has caused me to have my own different perspective. Because of my perspective, I know what it's like to feel underrepresented or represented wrong, like when I was in middle school, learning about American- Like when I was in middle school, learning about American history and the teacher pointed at me saying, "A lot of kids like you were the result of slavery", but gave no context to why that was or the time I was in class feeling like it was just so much harder or maybe impossible for me or people like me to achieve something great. But I decided to take charge of my own education. I learned about women, millionaires and Black Asian pioneers throughout history, but I didn't learn it at the place I spent seven hours a day and five days a week at. I learned it through social media and movies and Google. I only discovered this recently at 16-years-old and I've been going to school since I was like five. I had a course, if I had a course I took about African-American history where I studied my culture and my history accurately, maybe me and the people like me wouldn't feel like it was white man's history lesson every day. This class would mean to me like we are finally being heard and that my community is finally taking steps to represent me and that's why I should make the decision to add African-American history to the courses of next year. But off to my next topic about the TJ admissions. I don't go to TJ, but I know people who have tried, like my sister, that came from a school with no gifted programs or people making it more possible for her to take TJ. She went to take this test like many others in our low-income community that have tried but have never been admitted to TJ. But when you have schools like Rocky Run Middle School ranked one of the best middle schools in Fairfax, with the gifted program in this area, average income is higher and the schools and the students there are over 70%, 78% white and Asian. The reason I'm comparing the two is to look at the students that come from areas where Rocky Run Middle School are going to have an easier time taking this test and being encouraged to take this test because the schools in the highly white Asian populated areas set them up to be on track to join the schools like TJ. But the areas with high presence of higher-income Asian and white students from higher-income areas only make up a fraction of our public. So if TJ is a public school, why doesn't it look more like our public?
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sherry Yang.
Good evening. I'm Sherry Yang, a Fairfax County resident. On October 8th, you voted to eliminate the admissions test for TJ. I ask you to reconsider that decision. First, I'm a trained engineer. As an engineer manager for an aerospace company, it's challenging to hire qualified engineering graduates. It's no secret that many college engineering schools offer freshman prep courses in math and science so as to prepare them to be ready for college-level study. But it still has a very high dropout rate. What causes it? The main reason is a lack of foundation in math. It takes years of learning, practice and discipline to build that foundation. Testing has been proved as the most effective measure of learning in STEM. Second, I volunteered in a community outreach program and also in Iris Descents Curiosity Machine to help underrepresented local middle school students. Those programs are well-designed, but we saw a lack of interest among students. Effective effort shall be applied from elementary and middle school. The admissions test isn't the enemy for TJ diversity, but the failure in the pipeline is. Rightly, FCPS has spent millions of dollars on programs to empower underrepresented students for decades. But what's the effectiveness of those programs? Where is their accountability? Third, the lottery proposals, old and new, are fundamentally wrong by discouraging hard-working young students, poor and rich, of all colors of skin, who enough to pursue STEM education. According to a new report by FCAG, the lottery ought to maintain the academic excellence. It won't get the diversity. Furthermore, it violates the school's mandate to serve exceptionally gifted students. American school kids are less prepared in STEM compared to kids in other developed countries. Fortunately, TJ has been a strong force to inspire and contribute to the advancement in American science and technology. It's of a public interest to keep TJ competitive. I ask you to do the right thing, keep admissions tests as part of TJ's admissions process. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Payal Nima.
Good afternoon. My name is Payal Nima. Respected board members, Chairman Anderson and Mr. Braybrand. My name is Payal Nima and I'm speaking to you in opposition to the removal of the test and beginning of the merit-based admission to Thomas Jefferson High School. I speak to you as a mother of TJ freshmen but also as an engineer working in a major defense company that is responsible for producing systems that advance our national security. I can attest to the technical challenge our nation faces today and will face even more prominently in future due to the increased technological investigation of our adversaries. Our competitiveness and our nation's competitiveness depend upon our engineers. We give internship and job offer to students from Thomas Jefferson because we believe that these students have undergone a rigorous assessment and have been trained through grilling education curriculum. We consider both of these as essential for success of type of work we do. Let me assure you that I'm not against diversity. I, as a woman, an engineer and in a Southeast Asian, am an example of diversity in my company. I am sure many women here can relate to my struggle in gaining acceptance. As a young woman engineer in an automotive industry, I was told shop floor is not for girls. I persisted and advanced not because somebody rolled a dice in my favor, but through my determination and competence, proven through tests that I was subjected to at many stages. The gifted student program at FCPS is unique and I urge you to understand the psychology of gifted children and why giftedness is a curse. Why does, why does the gifted population have such high rate of axiscarness development and mental health issues? Gifted and special needs childrens are two sides of the same coin and research indicate that gifted need it to be tested for proper identification. I also urge you to understand why time and money poured into outreach program has failed and 65% of the Black and Hispanic who taken geometry and algebra two in eighth grade chose not to apply for TJ. I request you board members to realize that your action today will have long-term consequences. Weaker standard in admission will lead towards weaker standard in training and education. I therefore urge you to reject both proposals that are currently on table because both do injustice to the gifted population in our area by dropping the test. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Susan Danowitz. Susan Danowitz.
Hello again, school board. According to the formula the U.S. Equal Employment Opportunity Commission designed, a school's demographic should be within 20% of the districts. For TJ, that's the student body with at least 40 African-American students per class and over 100 Latinx students. In a recent survey of TJ alumni, 79% agreed or strongly agreed that they would like to see more Black, Latinx and low-income students at TJ. Past TJ principals also support a lottery. The Washington Post editorial board, after 30 years of headlines about TJ's diversity problem, called a TJ shakeup overdue and urged the school board not to shirk making TJ fairly serve its diverse community. Their education expert Jay Matthews praised the lottery. A lottery from a highly evaluated pool of candidates with a second look option exception for 100 or so kids is the better option. I advocated 16 years ago for a holistic review of TJ applicants. Holistic reviews have been tried at least three times at TJ. Holistic review never budged the diversity numbers at TJ. Lofty goals got watered down. A holistic system that selects the top evaluated 500 kids sounds great. It seems like it could be more successful than a lottery at improving diversity quickly since the lottery's result depends on who qualifies and applies. But there have been many lawsuits on the role of race in holistic review, while a lottery is race-blind. The reality is that TJ has not been admitting our most gifted minds in spite of what FCGAG says. Many brilliant kids haven't had this squeaky-clean resume to get into TJ, including two out of three recent students taking calculus in eighth grade. Lateral thinkers are attending their base school. The reality is that TJ's been selecting Fairfax County's savviest applicants. Applicants are often guided by parents, schools, churches and prep companies who figure out the system and push their kids through it, sometimes to their misery. This reality will not cease when the admission process changes. A lottery protects student time for honest pursuit of knowledge. Encouraging underrepresented groups to apply to TJ is much simpler and straightforward than tinkering with a review panel to help underrepresented kids get more of the top 500 slots. The talent is already out there, not just in the savvy homes, in every type of home. It's in all the middle schools, all the tax brackets, and it's certainly in all the board member districts. Eight out of the top 20 high schools in the U.S. have a lottery as part of their admission because it works. And the magic is, a lottery brings in types of diversity and genius you didn't even know you were missing. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jay Lamb. Jay Lamb. Okay, we'll move on to our next speaker, Sujatha Hampton. Sujatha Hampton.
I'm here. I'm trying to make my video share. Can you see me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Sujatha Hampton. I'm the Education Chair for the Fairfax County NAACP. Thank you so much for your time. Again, we assemble to offer public testimony that none of you needs to hear. I want to offer only a few comments because you know precisely where the NAACP stands on all the issues before the board. Both versions of the TJ admissions currently being floated are bad. The first because of the 100 set-asides, which creates not only a two-tiered system of worth but also puts infinitely more pressure on these very same children who were so stressed by the test you gestured away with. The second because you're giving bonus points to children for hardship factors, but you could capture these children without demanding they put their hardships on display for all the world by simply opening up this public school to a merit lottery for all 550 seats. You could capture the rest of that talent with carefully crafted metrics. You could change the regional approach to a pyramid or school-by-school approach. You could reinstate visions. You could begin visions earlier. If it weren't for the undeniable fact that FCPS seems fully committed to segregationist pedagogy with the veneer of equity, I would hardly believe it. Sadly, here we are with two terrible plans, each worse than the original plan that Dr. Braybrand put forth on the 15th, on the September 15th. I don't know what to say about that. I know each one of you is being attacked, vilified, harassed endlessly by so many people in our community over this issue. TJ has taken up entirely too much of your time and the time of the community. I come here to discuss this because I know that if I don't, the voices of that tiny minority of people who want things to stay the same will have outsized power. They have always won. So I come and say the same thing again and again when what I want is to be talking to you about literacy initiatives, universal pre-K, teacher hires, improvement for general ed, boundaries, career and technical ed, segregation, so many things that impact quality of our kids' education. It is unconscionable that we spend so much time on Team JNAAP and not on ESL and general ed. I'm here because I have to be. Please remember how many people rely on you to stand up for them and their kids but who would never come and speak at a board meeting because they don't even know they can. Thousands of families who want the best for their kids too, but don't even know they can ask. Please remember that for every angry parent who wants to keep things, then the resources for themselves, there are thousands who don't even know there are resources. I know many are afraid, but I'm asking you to be brave in the face of all this public rancor. Please ask Dr. Braybrand to instate a school-by-school merit lottery for all the seats at TJ. There are kids whose lives could be changed by opportunities afforded to them through your brave choice now. Thank you very much.
Our final speaker is Raja Kakayeri.
Good evening. My name is Raja Kakayeri and I'm a Fairfax County resident since 2005. I'm also the father of an eighth grader who was dreaming about going to TJ since she was in the fourth grade and working on achieving that for the past several years. That is, until those dreams were brutally crushed by a misguided proposal called merit lottery that's being aggressively shoved down the community's throat by Superintendent Braybrand. My daughter is a straight A gifted student who's been showing keen interest in STEM subjects since a young age. She's participated in numerous math and science contests and won a few of them at SWOT. Recently, she's part of a five-member team that represents a school at the state science bowl. Due to her interest and passion in biology-related topics, she's deemed the expert to answer any biology questions by her own team members, who are all equally passionate gifted kids themselves. My daughter has a strong work ethic and she always chooses complex topics for her science fair projects, sometimes to her own detriment. She does this because she wants to explore and learn more about a specific topic beyond what started the class. The point I'm making here is that gifted students don't become that way due to some random chance or because their name was picked out of a hat in some lottery. They demonstrate a keen passion for STEM topics and follow their passion by working hard, pushing themselves and getting very good grades, just like my daughter does. As parents, we always taught her that working hard, persevering and competing will give her a fair shot to success. With the merit lottery, you're telling her and thousands of other kids that none of these things matter except some luck. You're literally crushing all these kids in the name of equity. Replacing the TJ entrance exam with a lottery means random chance and luck or favor or the traditional values of working hard and competing fairly. No one wants to have a lottery for the NFL or NBA because we want to see the best players compete and win. So why are you saying it should be different when it comes to the country's top school for STEM? Why are you letting Braybrand push a proposal that punishes exceptional kids because they have demonstrated that passion for STEM with their academic record and success of the TJ entrance exam? In a recent meeting with the community, Senator Warner remarked that one of the reasons companies relocate to Fairfax County is because of TJ. Don't water that down by turning the governor's school to another high school in the name of improving racial, ethnic, racial and socioeconomic diversity. I plead with you to put an immediate stop to the superintendent's ill-advised and ill-conceived merit lottery proposal, instead asking to focus his efforts on what it really matters, nurturing STEM talent at the primary and middle school level. You cannot compete in the Olympics by being average and getting lucky from an Olympics lottery. So why should that be a pathway for a STEM magnet school like TJ? Selecting a kid through lottery and putting them in a school for which they are ill-prepared is 100% the surest way to set them up for lifelong failure. Don't do it and the superintendent don't do it either. Thank you for hearing me out.
Mr. Jay Lamb is now ready to speak. Mr. Lamb? Okay, never mind. We have video testimony from Sarah Robles and Diane Cooper-Gould.
Good evening, school board members. My name is Sarah Robles and I am both a teacher and a resident of Fairfax County. I'm speaking to you tonight about my feelings toward the return to in-person learning. This is my eighth year teaching music in FCPS. I love my job. I get to make music with students every day. I love my students. I love hearing their voices and seeing their smiles. I love my community. My colleagues are hardworking, amazing and giving. All of that being said, I do not think FCPS is showing its staff that they care about us. School closed in March with zero warning. Suddenly, we were thrust into being virtual teachers. With little to no training at all, FCPS teachers and staff stepped up. We taught online, pointed out laptops, delivered meals and called our students to make sure that they were okay. Over the summer, Over the summer, teachers were surveyed. Not IAs, not custodians, not office personnel, not food service workers, not bus drivers, only teachers. We were told that we would be put into tiers. Those with the greatest needs would be prioritized to stay virtual when FCPS began in-person learning again. Now, we are finding out that many in tier one, the highest need, have been denied. What was the point of surveying us if you could not accommodate that? When teachers and staff see that families get surveyed not once, twice, and all of their requests are being accommodated, how can we think anything but FCPS does not care for us? I am an itinerant music teacher. That means I teach at two different schools. If I were to get sick, I can contaminate entire buildings. When we have phased in all elementary grade levels, I will have over 100 different contacts a week. Numbers are going up in Fairfax, not down. Almost all the CDC school metrics are listed as moderate, higher, or highest risk. When will FCPS show that it cares for its staff by committing to remain virtual until community spread is at near zero for 14 days? People are dying. We are now at over 240,000 deaths nationwide. How many deaths will it take FCPS to realize that it is not safe? Thank you.
I'm Diane Cooper Gold, Advocacy Chair for Fairfax County SEPTA. SEPTA supports getting students wrapped into school buildings as soon as is safely possible, and we've repeatedly advocated for our highest-need students to receive in-person instruction. At the same time, we also represent our school staff. It is irresponsible that FCPS has not established a systematic, county-wide method for collecting feedback from school staff on the ground. Despite SEPTA advocating since the spring for a secure method for staff to report logistical and emergency concerns, nothing has been done to ensure that all voices are heard. There is still no safe reporting setup for school-based staff, no significant reliable way to collect data on how a cohort and pilot rollout is going. In fact, we've heard multiple teachers that their administrators have forbidden them from speaking publicly about problems with the rollout of returning to school, and forbidden them from bringing those concerns to school board members. Some concerns from staff, in their own words, are, quote, "Captain teachers do not have ample supply for PPE." We've been hand sanitizing our glove because we're on our last box of latex gloves. And from two teachers, quote, "We still don't have our lab coats, even though we've been back in school through high context students for weeks." Our school has not yet received any glove assistance at all. Our school does not have gowns that properly fit me, yet I'm still expected to report to work regardless. I'm just so upset, humiliated, terrified, and overwhelmed. I don't know what I'm going to do. My school only has Plexiglas installed in the admin office and nowhere else in the school. And construction is being done at my school, and most of the construction workers are moving throughout the building without wearing masks. We at SEPTA were dismayed at last week's school board meeting that the FCPS central office misrepresented what is going on in school buildings, omitting the many written concerns they received, and not even having a single special education teacher or staff member in attendance to offer their feedback. When FCPS administration was asked about the lack of special education staff presence, the silence that followed was deafening. We are heartbroken to repeatedly hear from many FCPS staff members who are now so demoralized and worn down that they are leaving the teaching profession entirely. These are teachers who want to be back in the building despite the potential risk to their own health. This week, an FCPS teacher who had been excited to return and shared, quote, "I have never felt so undervalued by my employer." Another said, quote, "I look forward to not working in schools anymore." With health and safety mitigating factors not being consistently implemented, and with no safe reporting system in place for staff, FCPS is putting the health and perhaps lives of employees at risk. It is sending a message to school staff that their lives are expendable. Public education is the bedrock of a democratic society. We are afraid that unless you develop better ways of supporting and keeping staff safe, we will have massive systemic damage to repair and rebuild when COVID is finally under control. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe those were all of our speakers, so thank you to our clerk. I now call Ms. Darinak Kofax for the motion.
Well, Jay Lamb would like to speak if possible.
I'm sorry, Dr. Anderson, am I next?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. I move that the school board adopt the FY 2021 Fairfax County School Board State and Federal Legislative Program as detailed in the agenda item with the following amendments. Would you like me to read all the amendments?
I believe we have to. We can help you if you like.
Okay, yeah, I don't have those up. I will read the first one as it's up here.
Okay.
And maybe if the clerk could help me.
We will have the clerk help you as well, and I can support.
All right, thank you. Number one, adding the following language as a new position under item D, College and Workforce readiness. The Fairfax County School Board supports continued graduation and testing requirement flexibility for students affected by school closures and subsequent virtual and hybrid institution school reopening in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Number two, if we can move that down, please. Thank you. Adding the following language as a new position under item K, Governance and Mandates. The Fairfax County School Board supports permitting school boards to seek disclosure by potential vendors, whether the vendor imposes pre-dispute arbitration on their own customers or employees, and to offer alternatives to pre-dispute arbitration, which preserves protected student privacy and alternatives for parents or guardians. Number three, adding the following language as new position under item K, Governance and Mandates. In light of the November 2020 VCU Penn State Study on School Segregation in the state of Virginia and its associated recommendations, the Fairfax County School Board supports initiation of a Joint Legislative Audit and Review Commission, J-LARC, study on the school segregation in Virginia. Number four, adding the following language as a new position under item five, State Education Funding. The Fairfax County School Board supports increased state resources to address school division needs related to addressing public health emergencies, including resources to provide school-based COVID-19 testing capabilities. Number five, adding the following language as a new position under item 10, Student Discipline Alternatives. The Fairfax County School Board supports limiting the required reporting of school-based student offenses to law enforcement only to cases where the offenses would be a felony or in the case of instances of assault or assault and battery without bodily injury. Reporting such cases to the police at the discretion of the principal. Number six, adding the following language to replace the existing position AB.5, Teachers and Instructional Personnel. The Fairfax County School Board supports better alignment between the content and coursework requirements in teacher and administrator preparation programs and their respective licensure requirements, including those mandated by state and federal policymakers, and the actual skills and content knowledge necessary for teachers and administrators to be successful. Number seven, adding the following language as a new position under the federal ESSA position. The Fairfax County School Board supports continuing federal testing requirement flexibility for students affected by school closures and subsequent virtual and hybrid instruction school reopening in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. The following or board member proposed amendments to the state and federal priority position drafts. Number eight, adding the following language to the state priority position under the new header of Student Mental Health and Behavioral Health Supports. The Fairfax County School Board supports significantly increased flexibility provided state resources to allow school divisions to address the specific mental and behavioral health needs of their students.
Ms. Darinak Kofax, we're happy to support you if you want to take a break, but continue if you feel up to it.
I'm good, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that the clerk is doing a beautiful job keeping it here. Number nine, adding the following language to state priorities under the header Pandemic Related Funding Resources. The Fairfax County School Board supports increased state resources to address school division needs related to addressing public health emergencies, including resources to provide school-based COVID-19 testing capabilities. Number 10, adding the following language to state priorities under the heading Pandemic Related Policy Flexibilities. The Fairfax County School Board supports continued graduation and testing requirement flexibility for students affected by school closures and subsequent virtual and hybrid instruction school reopening in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. And number 11, adding the following language for federal priorities under the new header of Pandemic Related Policy Flexibility. The Fairfax County School Board supports continued federal testing requirement flexibility for students affected by school closures and subsequent virtual and hybrid instruction school reopening in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. And number 12, the following language under item I, Environmental Sustainability and Renewable Energy. The Fairfax County School Board supports efforts to reduce the county's greenhouse gas emissions and operational demand for energy through efficiency, conservation, renewable energy, and education state initiatives, opportunities, and targeted goals for the expansion of renewable energy, energy efficiency, and net-zero construction, and removing existing barriers to such efforts.
Thank you, Ms. Darinak Kofax. Is there a second?
Seconded by Karen Corbett Sanders.
Thank you, Ms. Corbett Sanders. Ms. Darinak Kofax, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. Our schools are directly and indirectly affected by policy and budget decisions made by our local, state, and federal officials. Because of this, it's very important that our board provide input to policymakers as they debate various policy options that impact our students, teachers, staff, and the broader community. Each year, we adopt a legislative program and legislative priorities to inform local, state, and federal and public officials of our positions. This program contains the school board's positions on state and federal issues of major and current significance. In 2021, the federal and state legislative program before us includes additions, deletions, and formatting changes from the board's 2020 legislative positions. These changes and updates are intended to reflect actions taken over the past year by state and federal government and to reflect the board's current approaches to policy debate and issues. This year, we held conversations on the proposed recommended changes to our 2021 state and federal legislative program on October 6, October 20, and October 27. The proposed revisions to our board priorities have been incorporated into our legislative program. I want to thank Mr. Malloy and his team for their guidance, his knowledge, and his professionalism, and his patience as we work through this. Tonight, we will vote to adopt our legislative program as well as our priorities. There are several motions that I have just read as part of this legislative program and document. These are our priorities combined into one omnibus motion. I look forward to passing this tonight, and I look forward to discussion, as well as our discussion next Monday, November 23, with our NOVER delegation. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Corbett Sanders, would you like to speak to your second?
Yes, thank you so much. I really appreciate the comments that my colleague, Ms. Darinak Kofax, offered because this really has been a partnership, and it's been a partnership of this whole board, unlike previous years. Mr. Malloy took a lot of opportunity to meet one-on-one with each of our board members so that he could not only walk them through our previous legislative agenda, but he also talked to them about their legislative priorities and tried to incorporate them in the very first document that was presented to this board. Subsequently, lots of conversations in work sessions and one-on-one, especially over the past week, have resulted in this very comprehensive motion before you. And the motion reflects not only what are priorities that we've talked about over the past 10 months together, but it also reflects a recognition that there are a number of initiatives that are before the state legislature that we will have to address going forward. And so it's a living document. The priorities page is really important because what we will have is we will have a front and back priorities page for the state legislative and then a singular one-pager for our federal legislators. And between those two, backed up by the comprehensive document before us, we will be able to ensure that Mr. Malloy is very effective in Richmond and in Washington, but it will also be a wonderful guide that has been proven to be very useful to our state legislators, that they are able to pick it up off their shelves and flip through to figure out where Fairfax stands on individual issues and then picking up the phone and having a conversation. So with that, I hope all of our colleagues will support this omnibus motion that is tied to the adoption of the overall legislative agenda. So thank you very much, and thank you for the collaborative effort of this whole board and Ms. Darinak Kofax in partnering with me on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers to this motion? Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes, I do appreciate everyone's thoughtful proposals here. I do want to express just my concern that our clerk sent this to us last night at 9:00 PM, so I presume that's, you know, when she finally was able to collectively get all these together and get posted. And so I personally did not put forward any legislative amendments, and everyone knows my big concern is our religious exemptions and how we handled it, because I didn't think it would be fair to put on to all of you with everything we have, what I think requires some conversation. And so some of these are real easy to just go, sure, they're great. Others, I think that they warrant some conversation before we just, in an omnibus manner, say, yep, I mean, my colleague liked it, that looks good. So I do appreciate that Mr. Frisch and Ms. Tolan sent a very detailed email to all of us about this proposal. I know they're working on the JUT, the Joint Environmental Task Force. So that one, to me, is kind of an easy one. I do have a question for one of our colleagues because I really, really believe in as much restorative justice as possible. So it has to do with number five. So I don't know if it's easiest just to direct my question to Ms. Marin, who created it, but my one pause I would share with everybody is, in the language it says at the end, "at the discretion of the principal." And why that gives me pause and why I'd like for Ms. Marin to maybe talk about why she put that caveat in there is, we have 25 different high school principals, another 22 middle school principals, and as, you know, Dr. Brabham's aware, he's leading on restorative justice, but our principals are still coming along and understanding what that means. And so it worries me that in high school A, a principal wouldn't refer to police, and high school B, they would because it's at their discretion. And so if Ms. Marin, if you wouldn't mind maybe helping share why you wanted to put in there, "at the discretion of the principal," it's the one where I would say, why are we giving? "at the discretion of the principal," it's the one where I would say, why are we giving it individual discretion? It's either something the board believes should happen, and we wouldn't want that carved out.
Thank you. Ms. McLaughlin, did you have other questions? If you did, it would be great if you listed them at this point. We will ask everybody who is responsible for them to respond. I've noted number five.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it. I think that those were the ones that I, again, I thought number 12, we got a lot of information on. Number five is the one that I think I'm just most, it's giving me pause after all the work we are doing to get, when we talk about equity, putting it into principal discretion is what I don't understand.
Thank you. Ms. Marin, I would invite you to speak to your amendment.
Sure, thank you. Yeah, I, I'm very eager to work on these amendments and this language. You know, I had sent it out to the board, to my colleagues on November 1st, so certainly welcomed any input prior to now. This amendment goes back to the discussion in July when we were updating the SRNR. And at that time, the General Assembly had actually changed the law to make it more at the discretion of the principals. So what I, and myself and Ms. Corbett Sanders, at the time, had put forth an amendment to make it less at the discretion of principals in our SRNR, but now this amendment is seeking to say, we support limiting that and limiting that discretion, because while the General Assembly thought, you know, I guess in some parts of the state, that discretion was needed, we all agreed that that was not the case in Fairfax. So basically, what we're trying to do now is reverse what the General Assembly said. And Michael Malloy, if you're on the call, perhaps you can speak to this further, and Ms. Corbett Sanders, but it's basically trying to reverse what we all said we didn't like in the first place in July.
Thank you, Ms. Marin. I do not believe that Mr. Malloy is here. Is he on?
Oh, he is.
Is he here?
Yes, he is. His hand is up, Madam Chair.
Okay. Oh, I'm not.
Good evening, Madam Chair.
Of course. Mr. Malloy, please go ahead and respond.
Absolutely, more than happy to. Good evening, everyone. So in, in terms of this language, as, as Ms. Marion mentioned, the General Assembly last year made a change in how, how incidents were reported to the police. Prior to this previous year, principals were required to report a number of different offenses to the police. They didn't have any discretion over it, over the reporting. It had to be done. What ended up happening during the General Assembly session is that they limited the required reporting to incidents that rose to the level of felony, so they required reporting in, in terms of very serious offenses, but then granted discretion to principals whether or not to report other offenses. So you could actually have two similar offenses, one of which is serious and is a felony and would have to be reported, and the other, which is not as serious, which would be at the principal's discretion. What this language represents, actually, is the language that I believe is currently in your SRNR. I think it's, it's pretty much word for word in terms of how the reporting requirement goes. So the, the reporting requirement is required, as it would be under a felony, but then it only carves out the two instances, the assault and assault and battery without bodily injury as areas where there could be discretionary reporting. But the sum total of this is that it would limit the discretion the principals have to report anything other than those two enumerated instances and things that aren't a felony.
Thank you very much, Mr. Malloy. Ms. Marin, were your statements complete?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers to the motion?
Dr. Anderson, I'd raised the question. She was answering my question, but I would like to speak to what Mr. Malloy and Ms. Marin said. I guess, Dr. Brabran, I think you would signal to speak as well, but I, I guess what I'm still not hearing is, while I understand what's in our SRNR, but even since we passed the SRNR, we've continued to be more progressive in, in our restorative justice. So what I haven't heard is, why do we want to allow any discretion that could create inequity? Why, why wouldn't it, it's either we expect principals to report on this when it, when it involves assault or assault and battery without bodily harm? I, I guess I would love to hear someone help explain, why do we want to have, why do we want to go down the General Assembly and promote principal discretion that could create that inequity in how it's handled?
Thank you. Dr. Brabran, was your hand up to respond to that question? Because I have two other speakers. I could certainly return to you.
Come back to me in a minute.
Absolutely. Ms. Keys-Gamaro?
Yes, I, I think I understand what Ms. Marin is trying to achieve, although I do have some concern regarding discretion. And I, and I understand Ms. McLaughlin in the sense that I think in Fairfax County, we're looking at that discretion and trying to figure out how to make sure it doesn't result in disparities. I'm concerned whether that would happen statewide, so that would be my concern here. I, I, I believe that there's a good intent, but I'm worried about a possible unintended consequence here.
Thank you. Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Yes, thank you for the opportunity to respond to this. This is, this language was crafted in this manner to reflect how the robust debate that we had at the board table in July in the discussion of the SRNR. And that debate really focused on how much discretion should be given to, to principals or that we would, we would be comfortable with, and that this was one area where it was only limited. It's a very skinnied-back role of discretion to focus purely on instances of assault or assault and battery without bodily harm, which are not necessarily a felony offense. And so it is one which Ms. Marin and Mr. Malloy and I, A, debated very rigorously over the summer, and that we, as a board, had adopted this motion as a follow-on motion that was presented by Ms. Marin at the board table in July for the SRNR, and this is really capturing what had, capturing that earlier discussion.
Thank you. Dr. Brabran, did you want to add any comments?
I, I just want to add, and, and you know, I think we had our principals there. We, we want to, we had a long discussion on this at the board table. There are a few cases based on what may be happening in that, in, on that school property with that student, the knowledge of that student, that our principals may need to report that to the police. And this is a very tough one, I know, to try to balance a very limited role for discretion on an overall language that is working to limit the required offenses to law enforcement. So this is just a small window of flexibility for principals, again, in the case of assault or assault and battery without bodily injury, reporting such cases at the discretion of the principal, because there are some cases that are more serious that may, that may merit a referral to law enforcement, and that families here in Fairfax County Public Schools would want principals to do it. So restorative justice, yes, less required reporting to law enforcement when we don't need to involve law enforcement, but small window of flexibility for certain situations that may merit law enforcement referral.
Thank you. Ms. McLaughlin, did you have additional questions?
Yes, I, I appreciate that, Dr. Brabran, very much, and I, I hope I speak for many, if not all, of my colleagues, that what we would want to see is tracking of that discretion to just make sure that we don't see disparities in how that gets carried out. Because I, I do believe all of our principals are, are dedicated to this work, but discretion can still look very different across schools. I guess I would say, for the package as a whole, again, I want to compliment all of my colleagues who pulled together these amendments, and especially Ms. Marin, for, again, my passion for the restorative justice. But in general, we had two work sessions, and this, a, a lot of these amendments were not brought up or discussed. And so as, as much as I, I do really appreciate a lot of where this is coming from, I refrained from doing this because I didn't feel like I had brought it to a prior work session. I think from a public perspective, I don't even have staff opinion on all of these different amendments. So respectfully, I'll just be abstaining tonight on this, but I, I do want to compliment and appreciate people's work. I think just in the future, we've got to have this conversation in work sessions.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? Okay, seeing none, and I will move to the vote. The motion before us is on the screen. All those in favor? We have Ms. Seismohizer, Ms. Cohen, Mr. Frisch, Ms. Corbett Sanders, Ms. Marin, Ms. Tolan, Ms. Darnakowfaks, Ms. Pekarsky, and myself. Please lower your hands. All of those against? There are none? All of those abstaining? Ms. Omeish, Ms. McLaughlin, thank you. Ms. Keys-Gamaro, I am not sure I recorded a vote for you.
I'm sorry, I was trying to vote with the first group.
Okay, so Ms. Keys-Gamaro will be voting with the first group. That would be 10 in favor of the motion and two abstentions. The motion carries. At this time, I'll invite our vice chair, Ms. Pekarsky, to take us through the next part of the agenda, which is the consent and new business issues. Ms. Pekarsky?
Thank you. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's rules, provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Many items listed have gone through board review, and documentation has been provided to all board members and the public in advance. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the meeting. The consent agenda items are on the screen. Is there any objection to approving the consent agenda? Hearing and seeing no objection, the consent agenda is approved. 6.01 new business. The new business items are on the screen. There will not be a vote tonight on these items, but action is scheduled at a future meeting.
Chairman Anderson, may I ask a question about new business?
Yes, I'm so sorry, my microphone was on, was off, and I started to speak. Ms. McLaughlin, please go ahead.
Yes, thank you. I noticed under new business that we listed the second item was Level 4 AAP Services, but unlike the, the first item that precedes it under new business, where it says anticipated action date and the, the language of what action is before the board, that one just says Level 4 AAP Services. So I was hoping to understand if that's scheduled for action at this time. If so, what is that date, and is there any language that follows that new item?
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin, for your question. I will be happy to have Ms. Pekarsky elaborate on the agenda item, but it is not scheduled for, for action this evening. That will happen at our next business meeting, which I believe is December 3rd. However, regarding the other details, Ms. Pekarsky, would you please share?
Sure, thank you, Dr. Anderson. I'm, I'm happy to do so. I mean, it will be scheduled for a vote, I believe, at our December 3rd meeting, and I do believe I saw the language of the motion that is being put up for consideration on board docs, so I'm not exactly sure why it didn't make it onto this, oh, oh, there it is.
Ms. Pekarsky, I, I apologize. I think it's just a, it's a format issue. So when we look at the agenda, the way it was listed out for new business, it gave 6.01, it reads all out, and then 6.02, it just lists that, and then you have to go and, to get to the right-hand side where then there's more details. So it, it gives the appearance that we don't have that other information there. So you are correct, your motion is listed there. It doesn't list the, the date yet, but it does provide your motion, and I appreciate your, your work on getting that posted.
Thank you. Ms. Pekarsky, please continue.
Yep, I don't think I have anything else to say. I unfortunately cannot even see it on my screen, so I'm not sure exactly what you're looking at, but I'm very happy to work with you, Ms. McLaughlin, or to make sure that we get all of the information out and formatted and posted in the correct manner so that we are fully transparent with our public and with my colleagues.
Thank you. Ms. McLaughlin? Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Pekarsky. At this point, we will turn the time over.
Ms. Madam Chair, I do have a question on that as well.
Thank you. I apologize. I did not see your hand there. Ms. Darnakowfaks, please go ahead.
Yes, and, and again, because I'm, if the clerk could just put that back up there. I, I guess I have some questions on this issue, because we, we've had various work sessions on AAP, but I do want to know specifically, and if staff will have this ready for, then, when we choose to vote on this or prior to having it ready, I want to know how the local norms will be calculated. I want to see how norms will differ between regions, and I, I, I have other questions, but those are my two big ones, that I really, I think we all have a general understanding of what, what local norms might be, but I, I don't know if the general public does, and I definitely do not understand how they will be calculated, or, or how they will look different at different schools and regions. So I would like that information before I could vote on something like this.
Thank you, Ms. Darnakowfaks. We've noted those two questions for when this item will be voted upon on December 3rd. Ms. Pekarsky, I see that your hand is up. Did you have an additional comment?
Thank you. Just very quickly, this, as Ms. Darnakowfaks mentioned, this is something that had been discussed at prior work sessions, that also was discussed in our AAP expert review, and I will be very happy to get all the information and all the questions answered. And I know staff will have those answers ready as well, so that we can make informed decisions at our next board meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Pekarsky. Are there any additional inquiries? Seeing none, we will now move to superintendent matters. I call on Dr. Brabran.
Thank you, Chairman Anderson. I have just a couple of things. First, in connection with the school system's 150th anniversary commemoration, beginning in February of this past year in 2020, the Providence chapter of the National Society Daughters of the American Revolution began transcribing all of the pre-1922 handwritten school board minutes from Fairfax County Public Schools and its school board. The project took seven months to complete. Nine volunteers put in 700 hours of work transcribing some hundred, some 660 pages of documents from 1872 to 1922. These documents have previously only, only been available to the public on microfilm, and now they're going to be available on the FCPS website in the historic record section. Additionally, the records are keyword searchable and accessible to persons with special needs. These early school board minutes are filled with many interesting details. Teacher salaries in 1886 were $25 per month. In 1889, school board members voted to forego their salaries in exchange for per diem for horse feed and dinner at a hotel. I, I know that school board members probably feel their salary is still per diem for horse feed and dinner at a motel. And the time in 1914, school board members described being carried around in a machine, which was the first time a automobile was presented in Fairfax County Public Schools. Volunteers were so inspired by the stories of teachers and school board members, they're working on researching and writing biographies of many of the school board members and teachers from this time in our school system's history. I want to thank I want to thank the Providence Chapter of NSDar for helping preserve our history. I also want to just note that we really appreciated doing our return-to-school work session with you last week. I understand that we'll be having further conversation tomorrow on this very important topic, and I do want to share with all of you, as you know already, earlier today, I did communicate to the community, based on health metrics climbing above the threshold for decision-making, we shared with the school board and community just last Thursday night, that we pressed pause on returning additional groups to school for in-person learning, including Group 5, which was scheduled to go tomorrow. I am disappointed, we are all disappointed in pausing. We will continue to monitor health data to determine our next steps and to share updates with families. And we'll continue to work on the very core indicator, not just of the rising cases or the rising positivity rate, but the mitigation strategies that we can use in school, while COVID may be rising on the outside, that we can keep COVID low on the inside of our schools. We are starting tomorrow audit teams that will be going throughout all of our schools and the school system to make sure the mitigation strategies, hand washing, sanitizing, wearing masks, are done with fidelity. And we'll be providing updates to the board and community around that work, so that even if COVID remains at higher levels than we would like, we can continue to move forward with our return-to-schools plan. It is a careful balance, and it is a balance that requires this board's thoughtful reflection, and we're committed to continuing to work with you to bring you the information and data you need to make data-driven decisions. There is no impact, right now, to Groups 1 through 4 and our existing pilots. Those will continue as scheduled. I also want to just wrap up with a personal note. I am so excited to have Dr. Williams joining our team as our new CEO, and to have Dr. Presidio as our new Chief Academic Officer. There's nothing more exciting, I think, in the life of a superintendent, to watch people wrap around the school system to serve kids. I know what Dr. Williams will do, and I've seen firsthand for the last three years what Dr. Presidio has done, and it's an honor for both of them to come and serve as part of the leadership team here in Fairfax County Public Schools and to serve you all. And then finally, as George Becerra noted earlier tonight, John Torrey, our Executive Director for Community Relations and Communications, is retiring. John came to us almost a decade ago. He's advised people all over the country, including governors, and he came to be a part of the Fairfax County Public School System. He's often referred to as the principal's best friend, because in their moment of need, John Torrey was there for them, and he gave them grace and dignity, and he worked 24/7. And in our most challenging times this year, John Torrey stood fast and stood firm to support our schools, our students, and our staff. He is a man of high character, and I, I'm going to deeply miss John, and I thank him for his service to our school system. Thank you very much.
Thank you. At this time, I do know we have some board members who would like to say a few words to Mr. Torrey as he continues with his last few days with us. And while I get that list going, I do want to inform the public that we have made a change in our agenda for tomorrow due to the urgent nature of what is happening in our schools and our metrics. Our TJ discussion will be rescheduled, and tomorrow we will be having a discussion regarding returning to school, and particularly how to continue to have robust metrics that will allow us to safely return and retain our students in the school buildings. So, thank you. I see that we have Ms. Corbett Sanders. Please go ahead.
Yes, is John in the room?
He wasn't, he wasn't able to make it this evening in person, unfortunately.
Okay, I just want to see if he's actually, I don't think he's online either. So I'm going to actually suggest, Madam Chair, if it's possible, if we could invite Mr. Torrey to our December 3rd meeting or a meeting soon after, where we can provide him with the appropriate recognition and thank, and great, show our gratuity for his amazing work.
I would be very glad to do so.
Thank you. Then I will hold off my remarks about the wonderful John Torrey until that date. Thank you.
Thank you. The rest of the school board members who have raised their hands to speak, please feel free to make your comments. We can always repeat them. I see all the hands have disappeared. Are there any other speakers? So I guess we will wait for December 3rd. Thank you. At this time, I will call on Ms. Seismohizer for a report from the Public Engagement Committee, and following her report, we will ask Ms. Keys-Gamarra to provide an update from the Audit Committee.
Great, thank you very much, I appreciate it, Madam Chair. I wanted to start, we had our Public Engagement Committee meeting last week, and we had a very productive meeting. We first heard an update from the wonderful Mr. John Torrey about the great work that OCCR is doing to support our principals, our schools, and our families in return to school. We heard about the videos, the how-to-enroll, the checklist, the websites, and the principal corners and other communications that were being used to support getting the messaging out about return to school, our pilots, and all of our planning as we move forward in this pandemic. He also shared with me that there's some work that's being done to help systemize our communications across schools, and namely, we talked about with our committee about having a liaison, a communications liaison, at each school and providing some training to help sort of share out the good news and all the news from our schools, and share out the information from the leadership to our school community. So I thought that was some great work. And then we spent the bulk of our meeting working on our public comment policies. We are in the middle of updating our policies for public comment to really try to make these times as effective for our community to be able to share their thoughts and concerns with the school board. So we had a very robust discussion with my fellow Public Engagement Committee members, Ms. Omesh, Mr. Frisch, and Ms. Corbett Sanders, and really hammered out a lot of great policies and procedures. And Mr. Frisch and Ms. Corbett Sanders agreed to take all of our agreements and work on the details of the draft and bring it back to the Public Engagement Committee. So we look forward to seeing that, and I thank them for their work. So that is an update from Public Engagement Committee. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Seismohizer. Ms. Keys-Gamarra, the report from the Audit Committee.
Thank you. We had an Audit Committee meeting on November 11th. All of our board members, as well as citizens, were in attendance. We received auditor general updates, which included moving forward with our special education review, as well as our audit status and internal inquiries. And we also are beginning our Fidelity of Implementation of School Board Processes Audit, which will involve questioning all of our board members, and looking forward to being able to improve our processes with leadership. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. At this time, I call on Ms. Cohen for a motion.
Given the late hour, I'd like to make a motion to refrain from board matters tonight.
Is there a second? Eager Beaver, eager Beaver over there. Thank you. Would you like to speak to your motion?
That would kind of defeat the purpose.
Mr. Frisch.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. I really, yes, no, that's fine, thank you.
The comedy stylings of Mr. Frisch, everyone. All those in favor of this motion? We have Ms. Omesh, Ms. Seismohizer, Ms. Cohen, Mr. Frisch, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Darnak Kofax, Ms. Pekarsky, Ms. Marin, Ms. Tolan, Ms. Corbett Sanders, and myself. That is 11. Ms. Keys-Gamarra, are you abstaining or against this motion?
I'm sorry, I stepped away. I'll abstain. Thank you.
Okay, 11, motion carries. It is now 10:34, our meeting is adjourned.
Good night.